First item is roll call.
Alderman Baman.
Here.
Alderman Coleman.
Here.
Alderman Hedley.
Here.
Alderman Stratton, here.
Alderman Totten, here.
Alderman West, here. Have a quorum?
Next up the invocation was by Alderman Coleman this evening, followed by pledge of religions from Alderman Totten.
God bless me. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and the weather we've had over the last few days. We pray that you would be with us this evening, that you would give us wisdom in the choices that we make as our, our leadership. We pray for our first responders, that you would watch over them and protect them on all the calls that they go out on. Please be with this community as we go forward, that we might grow in the right direction, that we might do those things that you would have us to do. We pray these things in Jesus most holy name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next up is the referral to the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, just one change to the agenda. Under previous business, uh, we were going to have, this is part of staff comments, but we've decided to move, um, liquor, the liquor license follow-up, uh, for Outer Belt, uh, uh, I'm sorry. The Outer Belt Liquor License, uh, on to previous business after City Hall Parking Lot. Uh, staff has some additional information that the board, uh, needs to be aware of.
That's only a change?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I would entertain a motion then to add under previous business out of Belt Liquor License discussion. Who moves? Alderman Hedley? Have a second? Second, Alderman West? Any discussion? Seeing none, non-fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All both same sign. Agenda is amended. Uh, seeing no proclamations, then move on to assistance participation. We ask assistance who wishes to address the board, come forward to the podium or microphone, please give your name and address for the record. Do we have anyone who wishes to address the board this evening?
Park Johnson, six eleven Cross Street Drive, Green Drive. Um, I had contacted the mayor previously about the, um, tax levy, um, decrease. And, um, he said he could convey my thoughts and I don't believe that happens. Um, I didn't realize it was on the agenda last month, it was on State Department, I was in here. Um, for a long time, we diverted funds from road improvements, um, to intersection, to various things. And, um, we never, never gave those back. Um, the streets in all of our town, that money was diverted. Now we have extra money and rather than put it to use for roads, because our roads are deteriorating terribly. Um, I know the schedule's formed, but we could increase the schedules with that money. I just hate seeing that money that we have in hand, giving back when we have so many needs for it. Um, and I hope you can give it out some, in reality, I'm late, I'm sorry, but I just, um, don't think it's time to give money back, and we're in a different condition now.
We did actually discuss that, and Mr. Mayor, first time memory, we could only move a portion of it, correct?
Correct, yeah, we can only, uh, a penny or two into general fund. Um, the rest of it had to be rolled back because it was dedicated, left before debt service that had been issued.
What's the amount, what do you even have in mind, what was it, like forty?
Yeah.
Nine thousand or something?
Forty, right, right around forty thousand dollars.
We don't, anyone else wish to address the board? All right, seeing none, move on to consent agenda.
I'm moving to accept the consent agenda.
Uh, motion Alderman West to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Baman? Any discussion? Seeing none, non-fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All both same sign. Next up is previous business, uh, first item in the previous business would be Dollar General Liquor License.
Mayor and members of the board, um, bringing back to you for the second, um, meeting consideration of the Dollar General Liquor License. They would just like to add a Class K Sunday sales to their current license. All paperwork's been received, she's signed off on it, and, and we have no further questions on our end from the staff.
Okay. This being the second one we need a motion, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, this being the second time it's been on, then I would entertain a motion then to approve the Dollar General Liquor License change. Listen, Alderman Baman? Have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Stratton? Any discussion? Seeing none, non-fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All both same sign. Approved. Uh, next item in the previous business then is City Hall Parking Lot.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, uh, I will turn it over to Mr. Arroyo to follow up with that discussion.
I think we should have in front of you, uh, the options that kind of shows a couple of other options. Do you remember at the last meeting, we talked about some patching areas versus just the overlay areas? So, what I gather is, we had Superior Oak come out and give us some estimates of the patching. And I think you gotta understand that deep patching is a little bit different than the overlay, it's gonna cost more, more labor intensive. So, what we talked about doing this is you're actually cutting out the existing asphalt, going and basically patching the thickness of the subways of the water. And in this case, we're, we're looking at boards with that sort of surface. So, what we did was we went and looked at the worst area of the parking lot. It's a little bit different initially when we were looking at the overlay, and the whole thing. And, uh, we set a price for areas that are in red. We looked at, I kind of included some pictures, one of them is an area that's got a area highlighted in yellow, and the other one has no highlights. And essentially what that is, the areas in red are the deep patch locations, and these are kind of the areas with the worst, uh, condition. And, you know, keep in mind, a lot of people are sobbing there in front of City Hall, there's a lot of drunks, a lot of mobilizations here there. So, you know, there's people walking across there, trip hazards definitely, and so we wanna make sure that we grab a lot of those areas, and one was just under community center. And, the first option, kind of look at one, she talked about, uh, the estimate that we got, insurance and deep patching in the red areas. And then the median price for striking and paint, which is significantly lower than the general class of, just over, so the four deep patching was sixty-three thousand. And then the strike painting, which is five thousand two hundred and two. And then the first option, we went ahead and kind of looked at the available funds that were in that CIP account, that, how far could we take that, to show it to the overall response? And the area highlighted in yellow, the areas where we can mill, and that's what we're like, with, uh, actually an inch and a half of overlay surface. And that would still include the striking, the entire part. The second option was essentially just doing some patching, to just take care of those areas that are clean. It still includes painting and all this, the entire part. And that'd be option two, and that's the cost for option two. And so, those were, I think our best attempt at trying to do some kind of interim repair. And really, it's just that it's coming, you know, decision is to, how do we want them forward with that base load and stuff?
So, between the two options, which would survive that four to five year timeframe that we were talking about last time?
Both of them would. I think both of them would definitely do that. Uh, the question really, I think, is how much money do you wanna put towards it? Do we just wanna fix the patched areas, uh, to take care of those problem areas that we currently have? Or do we wanna see a re, a front main parking area, which really is, obviously, it's gonna be the entire parking lot, lot of months.
I think if, uh, everybody recalls this, it actually came up as part of a budget discussion that came from a staff budget meeting. We looked at, uh, funding available, knowing that the contract was, was coming up, uh, for the overlay throughout town, and all the roads that we're gonna have repaired, uh, in the coming months. And the question was, does, does the board originally, Rick had, uh, put into next year's budget funding to, uh, have the parking lot repaired over, and overlay? Uh, my comment to Rick was, well, let's take this to the board and see if it's something that they would allocate funding for this year, uh, to free up, to free up the, some additional funds next year. So, that's, that's part of where this entire conversation is, really, your, your options are, uh, to do, you can, you can do nothing and, and push this off until 2019 as part of the budget discussion. Uh, we have the original estimate that, that we talked about at the last meeting, um, depending on how much deep strength patching we have to do, uh, we can do a, the majority of the parking lot for probably about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then you have the two options in, in front of you tonight, really, these, these two options, uh, are the same except, uh, we have the, uh, mill and overlay included on one of them. So, uh, the deep strength patching, the areas in red, is, it's, it's going to go down and reinforce, um, the base of the concrete, so we don't have any other failures. Uh, that will outlast the five-year period. The original thought was that we would, in the areas that were failing, we would do a two, a two-inch mill, or a two-inch overlay to, to strengthen those. So, you really have several different options tonight. First is whether we wanna address this in 2018 or 2019, and if you wanna address it in 2018, uh, which of these three options would you be most interested in, uh, staff pursuing?
Any discussion?
I'm not ready to do any work on that.
That would be this year, October.
Same time as doing the street work, it'd be under the same contract. So, whenever they are doing the streets, they can do it.
My initial opinion is that we go with option two. That, that's gonna be my opinion of things. Because I don't think that it's probably a good idea to spend money on something if it's gonna last. So, we can move to our facility, why not spend half the money and put it into other things? So, that's gonna be my opinion of things.
I think I'm still stuck, because I, I do agree this parking lot needs some mending, but the streets in my neighborhood are worse than the parking lot by far. So, it's hard for me to say, yeah, let's spend this kind of money there, but keep putting off the neighborhood streets.
Or, or do nothing for that?
Last, if we defer it till next year, next year's budget?
I mean, I think it's important also to realize that, and I, I certainly understand your point of view, and I get it. But, our community center does still service the citizens. So, even though it's not necessarily a street, it is still the, you know, the benefit of the citizen, the community. Kind of have to look at that in consideration as well.
There are, uh, there, there are streets out there that definitely are in rough shape. My, my biggest concern with not doing anything with this is that I think there are, um, subgrade failures that if it, that, that are much worse than anything that we have out on the city streets. If we had failures, similar failures to what we have in the parking lot, we would, if that would be an emergency repair as far as, um, going out and doing deep strength patching. We have some surface issues.
Yeah, and I was gonna say, keep in mind too, you know, when we're looking at the parking lot, parking lots are really only three inch asphalt surface. So, we do actually have some areas that are going pretty much to the depths. So, I think, you have to look at this, we're gonna have to do something, it's really just the extent of what it is we would, really be looking at.
What square foot, I mean, what square foot is why is we looking at? Cause I mean, there's really a couple of key areas here, when you're looking at it, which would be the parking in front of the community center, then the parking in front of the City Hall. I mean, some of these other spots aren't, I would say, used as heavily, or, you know, I mean, like, in the back here, you're talking, you know, it's where the dumpsters are at and stuff, I mean, that's not gonna be, this drive here is really just a ride so much. I mean, we have people walking, getting out of cars in these spots here, and that's what I worry about. I mean, would be a possibility just to really do these key pieces right now and then.
I was gonna say, yes, but, well, the areas in red, which is at eighteen hundred and twelve square yards. But, I would say definitely, you're looking at the areas in front of City Hall and Community Center. Uh, there is an area that has failed pretty bad, in the middle, parking lot, which, yeah, yeah, but it's still an area here. There, here is excellent, pretty good, there's, yeah. A lot of these, you know, we do those, the cars parked in those areas.
Yes, I mean, I mean, if we just look at doing those key, key spots that, you know, like in front of the community center, you know, we have seniors with our senior luncheons and activities over there, you know, I don't wanna leave those in poor shape in front of City Hall too, I mean. Do those key areas this year, then maybe look at?
If we were to find it, it would just bring that option two down. I don't have an exact number, but I'd have to do the math for this.
I would be agree on doing that now, and then we can look at?
I would be all right with doing option two.
Yes.
In its entirety, and it sounded like there were funds available out of this year's budget to support that.
Yes, sir.
But that would be, that would be something that I would maybe prefer at this point, unless there's just an overwhelming majority to do something different myself.
Hmm, does that mean that one?
Option two, or?
I'll make a motion.
Well, I don't think anyone wants to do, I mean, I think option one's out totally, yeah.
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion for option two.
I'll second it.
Okay, option two in its entire, entirety, okay. So, we got a motion, Alderman Coleman, second, Alderman Totten. Any discussion then?
The only thing we didn't say was that it would be this year.
October, he said.
So, the motion would be to pull the funds from this year to do it, for option two, okay? Any discussion then? Seeing none, non-fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All both same sign. Uh, next up then, under previous business, is Outer Belt Liquor License.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, um, at the last, uh, well, I guess it was two meetings ago, uh, the board considered an application, uh, for a liquor license for the, uh, existing Whiskey Tango site. It had previously been up for consideration for the board, the first evening, uh, when Alderman Baman was serving as pro tem. Uh, that evening, uh, we tabled it and moved it to the following meeting, which was, uh, technically, I believe that was the second hearing for it. Uh, the information that we received in between the first meeting and the second meeting, um, was a cause for concern on, uh, Chief Beal and staff's, uh, part. We began to, to do some further research, which led to the recommendation of not issuing, uh, or not recommending the liquor license be issued. Uh, on September fifth, I was contacted by Aaron Beatty, um, on behalf of the company, wanting to know if we could sit down and discuss the memorandum that, uh, Chief Beal, um, had issued regarding the recommendation. Told him that we were happy to sit down and talk about any concerns, discrepancies that there may have been in that. And then on, uh, September eleventh, uh, we sat down and visited, uh, regarding the, the memo and some of the, uh, issues that they brought up with that. I think for right now, I'm gonna turn it over to, to Chief Beal to kind of recap that meeting, um, uh, how it relates to the recommendation that he made. And we've also brought, the, the two applicants are here this evening. Uh, all in the end, what staff will be, uh, suggesting is that the board can reconsider the application, um, and, uh, based off of the information that, that we shared this evening. So, Chief?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Board, Mr. Mayor, Board of Alderman, uh, we come before you again, just tonight, uh, like Ryan said, uh, we did meet with the new owners of, of Whiskey Tango. And they provided reasonable explanations, uh, for the allegations I made in the, uh, memo that I provided to you. My primary goal, when I did this investigation, was to bring the facts forward, which I felt like I did. However, uh, after talking to, uh, Mr. Beatty and Mr. Brokaw, they was able to reasonably answer some of the concerns that I had in my memo. I'll give you an example, um, on the inspection notice where they were charged, uh, with an employee drinking while on duty. Their explanation for that was, is that their club was separate from another club that had a kitchen. And that employee that they, the, uh, regulated industry, industries saw drinking in the kitchen wasn't employed by them. They were employed by the owner of the other business. Also, they said the employees didn't have liquor licenses on them. Again, after speaking with Mr. Brokaw and Mr. Beatty, uh, they actually brought in, uh, a binder full of, uh, the permits of their employees. And showed us that they keep that, that book in their office, uh, so it's obtainable by regulated industries, that, that the license didn't actually have to be on the person. Their explanation for the other violation about the sign being posted, again, they were just taking over the business, so they hadn't had time, uh, to put the sign up at that time. So, they did acknowledge that they weren't in accordance, uh, with the law on that violation. Another violation they had was over-serving. Uh, Mr. Brokaw was able to explain that this was a, a very busy night, when regulated industries came in to, to perform their inspection. Uh, it, it was just very busy. And he said it, it did happen, but he, he also stated that that's not a regular occurrence at the business. So, he did accept responsibility for that. One of the main ones that concerned me was the, the, uh, subject having oral sex in a VIP room. Uh, they said they didn't have any knowledge of that. Again, that was a very busy night. I think, when, when I look at that and, and hear their responses, and being fair and impartial, I think a reasonable person will have to, to think about what they said. Uh, the other thing is, they said they'd never received any notification of, of their violations. I reached out to regulated industries after we had the meeting on September eleventh, and I wanted them to send me proof that they, um, had properly notified Mr. Beatty and Mr. Brokaw, and I haven't heard back from them yet. So, there's no way to prove that they were actually informed of, of the, uh, violations that they had. So, based on the information I brought forth, I just felt like you guys needed to hear everything, the totality of, of the investigation.
One of the items that brought up, uh, they brought up, it was valid point, and, and if everybody has a copy of the packet that we put together, uh, the front page has a, uh, letter, uh, from Detective Jerry Grub, Kansas City Police Department. Um, this is a letter of recommendation from, uh, Detective Grub regarding, uh, his work and, uh, with both of the owners of their current location. This gentleman is actually in charge of the off-duty, uh, the off-duty scheduling for the area. So, they're very familiar and work with them on a regular basis. The second page has a map on it, and you'll see, uh, the red cross right in the middle. Um, to the left, uh, if you follow that, that red cross, that would, I guess if, if north was, was pointing up, uh, we would be looking at the west side of the, the, the road that's highlighted in red. Uh, that's their current facility, the building right there, uh, just to the north of that roadway. Um, and accordingly, uh, anytime that there's, uh, an inflow or, uh, an exit from Westport, you can see these purple areas that are highlighted, which are free parking this around the Westport area. A lot of calls, um, problems, disturbances, get associated through CAD, uh, to their address, simply because they are on the corner and it's the closest, uh, addressable, uh, or closest addressable intersection. So, one of, one of the explanations that, that they gave is that they may have, you know, somebody that's, uh, involved in a disturbance, or, uh, public intoxication, whatever the case may be. If the offense occurs down in that area, it gets tied back to their, their building through the CAD system, uh, that they have for dispatching with Kansas City. Um, and then we went, you know, as, as Chief said, we kinda went, uh, line by line through these inspection notices, and talked about what the, the situation was, what the violations were. Um, and, uh, found out that the, you know, liquor permit, uh, violation, for example, um, it, it lists two of those from an inspection that was, uh, performed on June twentieth of twenty fifteen. Both of those liquor violations, they, they're listed as violations, but it's not a chargeable offense. It was a, they came, they did an inspection, and based off of that inspection, uh, there were two employees that they found, um, did not have valid liquor permits on their person. Um, but there is no chargeable offense that, that came out of that. Similar to like if fire department comes to City Hall and does an inspection, and they find that one of our exit signs, uh, the backup battery isn't working on it. You know, the fire department would say, hey, you have a backup battery that's out, uh, you need to get that fixed. And then, in that case, they would come out and re-inspect and make sure that it was fixed. I think the facts that were presented to us from, uh, uh, from Aaron and Matt, at that meeting on, uh, September eleventh, were significant, significant enough that we felt that we need to bring this back to the board. For your consideration, um, not necessarily for a up-down vote tonight. I know that I've spoke with, uh, Mayor and, uh, a few others, but this needs to be a transparent process. And I wanna make sure that the information was provided to you in a public meeting, that you're able to review it. And that, uh, that if the decision to revoke the license was in, in part, or in whole, based off of the recommendation, or Chief not recommending, um, the, the issuance, then it's, it's only fair that you guys have the rebuttal from the applicants. And that the board reconsider, uh, the issue. So, with that, I would entertain any questions you might have? So with that, I would entertain any questions you might have. Chief? Do you have any questions for applicants? Feel free to ask. Sorry, Mayor, this is your meeting.
Any questions there? That's it.
How much security do you plan on having down there?
Our hopes match your thoughts with the very much about our performance. Our hopes are, once we can get in there and figure out how much security they currently have, just to improve that, have you have our projected security measures we need to do? We have, I think, a $100,000 estimate to do a thing around Lily. Not a lot of people go out on their back with concerns. We kind of do an operating security system so they don't have cameras, so we can do this more cameras outside. We plan on more than that, we'll need the lighting outside to help with that, which is a major concern. Do you have that?
Actually, they have it, it's the map we're talking about. So each of you have this in the packet.
Yeah, it's a chance to go back to the very first meeting that we'd have with you guys, there was issues and concerns arise about, talking to Chief Bill of the ones that they had with security, guys coming in more beat up than anything. And one of the things that I train our guys, we don't commit contact, we don't tip them, we don't contact our guys, we do correct training circles. So I plan on running more security out there than they currently have.
And you know there's crazy old ladies that go down there and test on you.
I would appreciate that and hopefully you come down and, and I'm one of them, everybody. We do quite a business in Westport, we do, we run elegant sales and we are on a very busy corner. We're hoping to be an asset of the community and do a very good job and we hope you guys reconsider and step in.
Are you going to keep the cans out there and patients?
Yes. And we have done, included research on Uber, there are Ubers in the area, we have to out there, we can look up Uber out there, are Ubers, feel like it's getting better and also contacts we have, you know, have.
Well, I do know that you do get hit at about one o'clock, but I went up to the whole line of them and they didn't even know who I was and I'm asking them, how come you're coming in this late? And you know, they didn't have any alcohol on them. And it was amazing, we said, I'd like to go out on a date and this is the only time. And after I heard it and I went in and saw it, I mean, I know that's true.
But with the building security measures and providing a lot more lighting out there, I think on the property, as the Chief had mentioned, very concerned with trailers in the back, people are taking too long back, so forth, so we try to limit that. We've worked with the fire chief and the focus in on making sure that the egress is proper, increased lighting, the fencing and security standards, hoping to do that.
Is your location at Westport going to stay open?
Yes.
So this would be an additional?
Yes, it will not change.
What type of, remind me, just what type of crowd is it you're wanting to draw in?
We're trying to continue concert. Our focus is stay at concert, so if you think it was going to be a name business, our focus is to bring back a lot more concerts. They've only done one concert this year, Sean is getting sick and you know, that, you know, same that situation, so we're back with things, maybe on. Aaron Lewis is one of them.
You stated last time we met that one of you would be at each facility while in operation. Is that a true statement or how are you going to do that every place? Understanding now, is it a play?
Yeah. We, one of us will be at each location. It is our plan to do that, especially getting going. We do have a, one of, our head of security is actually coming from a Westport location. He has been with me for two years now, so very, very good with us. So we plan on, it's a structure, but yeah, we will, we updated on that.
Questions on the board?
I have one. I don't know how, if you're aware of this or not, but the last two, three o'clock licenses we actually issued, even back, would be Sean's original one at Whiskey Tango and then Charlie's at CW, so you want to call it now. We actually did not issue three o'clock licenses when they first opened. Whiskey Tango, we did about six months, I think it was longer just by their choice down here. It's kind of, you know, in my opinion, it's kind of, you know, just because, no offense that we don't really know you guys and we don't know how it's going to go. I didn't know. Is that like something that's totally off the table, if you have to have a three o'clock license to start or is this something you'd be willing to do the 1:30 for like six months and come back to this in six months and say, hey, this is how it's gone, we've proven ourselves and we think the rest is three o'clock?
I understand your concern and for us owning businesses, it's a very big risk for us to put a lot of money into this business. We are buying, hoping to have a 3A license. Our plan is not to contend with this on a 1:30 license. I hope to say that, you know, getting a 3A license that we can serve you that we run a better operation, we actually very happy with what we're looking for.
And I believe last round, it came up real, you guys received a letter from Tom Turney claiming that he did 80% of the sales, I think 1:30 was on there, so we, they don't have a specific day for any sales, this is more working at PGA bars, being back where we're going from then, but that's their word, they pull a PGA, they have a 3A.
Of course, it's going to show. We're not going to take the risk to put a loan and buy this establishment without that.
Buy and build it there.
Our hopes going forward that the additional security measures, we're going to run a 3A.
Have we done any practice in the past? And I know we haven't opened many three o'clock licenses far, but have we done, is there a practice out there where we can establish, not necessarily set of rules, but a set of protocols where Chief and the police can be engaged directly in a more proactive manner versus wait till everything goes to hell and then now we've got to decide to revoke the license, go through a hearing and all that kind of stuff? Anything we can do along those lines?
Well, talking with Mr. Beatty and one of the things I wanted to do in front of, is to meet with them regularly and that's something that we discuss, maybe meeting quarterly to discuss any issues that may, or any concerns that we may have. And I think just keeping that rapport open will make things run a little bit better if that's the case.
If we agree to show any of our security employees what it's going to be, we work hand-to-hand with police down, that's not with cameras, they can do that off the street. You know, but I think there's been a challenge, we need to rehire all of our security staff and ensure that they're in contract and they will operate, that's our business, you know, some contracts.
And we talked about, you know, doing complete background checks and very adamant to do proactive with the Chief. I actually met with one of our sergeants last night, she said tonight, we just talked about proactive measures and hey, what can we do with this situation, what can we do to make things a little bit better here and there. I think that's a good communication relationship that Chief and I need to have and I think that we can do that. Doing background checks, we talked about doing liquor cards, which is, you know, what we already do in Kansas City, that's something that we can be able to assist him and help with if this is something you guys want to do in Grand Valley. I'm more adamant to be involved in this, you know, I'm going to decide if I want to move to Grand Valley area, so for us to be an asset with community and be involved in this, we're not just business men, but being part of this is huge for us.
Mayor, you commented earlier about the license in addition to, you know, the 1:30 possibly with moving it to something else in six months. The code actually states that a 3A license is automatically on a six-month probationary period. So that was one thing as we were going through this process and discussing the various options with the applicants, that's kind of a, that is a built-in safety with the 3A license. That's not to say that it's any easier to continue or revoke than it is any other time.
You're going to say it's the same process?
It's a six-month probationary period, after which the board reapproves it for a full one-year period from that.
Actually, the way it's written here is for any license issued for the first time shall be on a probationary basis for six months, subject to review at the end of said period. Said license may then be extended, revoked or suspended depending on the conduct of the license fee. So I think it would just extend until the expiration date in June at that point, whatever that timeframe looks like.
So the language or the terms or conditions of the probationary period aren't stipulated in the context of if this or that or the other thing specifically happens, then the license is revoked. It becomes a somewhat ambiguous or subjective decision on the parts of the board to determine if the license is extended.
Right, yeah. It's not a, it's not a, it's not a process of revocation, you know, where you have the hearing, so it can be subjective in that sense, yes.
Listen, action item for tonight?
Really what we wanted to do was bring it to the board to let you guys know that we had met with them and find out if, now that we've delivered the message, find out if the board would be interested in reconsidering this. Obviously, it would have to be at a subsequent meeting, it would be the next one, which is October the 8th, which is sure the applicants are ready to move a little quicker than that, but we obviously need to give the board a chance to, the full board, a chance to review the information presented tonight. There was no way to legally do that by circulating the information in court meeting, so.
So the board, do you think the action item is placed on the next agenda then or?
I think if you just direct staff to have it placed on the agenda, if you want to do that, you can do that via motion, it doesn't have to be motion and a vote, but you know, basically it's your agenda, Mr. Mayor, so if you direct staff to put it on there.
For a motion probably somewhere, so.
Was that making a motion Nancy, is that what that is?
Yes.
I got a motion from Nancy to place it back on the next agenda, I get to be under previous business again?
Yes, sir.
I have a motion from Alvin Totten to place it back on the, yeah, the liquor license on the next agenda under previous business. About a second.
Second.
Second, Alvin West. Any discussion on the motion?
I'm sure I'll be able to open.
That may go to the 8th, okay?
So this still falls within your existing due diligence period? Just getting a lot closer than you?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, okay.
They're willing. We're already considered, they passed, and if the venue comes up, time for the disclosure.
You have a question?
I personally would like to have a, exactly the meeting.
Okay. That one for our, I'm sorry. Any additional discussion on the motion placed on the next agenda?
I guess, sorry.
I'm sorry.
I would like to, at least, you know, again, the idea was to present this tonight and to give us some time to think about it and consider it between now and when we would discuss it again at the next meeting, correct? If we're talking about what to put on the agenda, I think I would like the opportunity to have some options to vote on, whether that would be a three or a 1:30 or to identify maybe a bit more specificity with regard to whatever the possibilities or however the votes for this would come down. Some element of specificity as to what would deem an appropriate infraction during a probationary period to not do this. I think leaving it gray and subjective and subject to the opinions without something clear that governs how these decisions get made, maybe in the context of a policy of some sort, I think would be appropriate to be part of it. I know that's a lot of work.
We're actually working on a entirely for code rewrite. The code as it is existing right now is antiquated and doesn't serve the best interest for both the city or applicants, so we've been in the process of reviewing that and obviously didn't want to take that step, you know, as we receive an applicant. But we can, yeah, absolutely come up with some terms that would give the board a level of comfort of, okay, if you do issue, you know, this license, well, any license, you know, what are the terms going to be subject to revocation or just not renew a probationary period?
Not extending.
You have anything else to add on the motion? See none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All both, same sign? Okay. See no additional previous business, no new business, move on to presentations. First presentation is ETC Institute Citizen Survey.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, as you know, ETC was engaged to do a citizen survey. Khalila Holland was actually the project manager over the process and we have that result completed, compiled and accordingly, they are here tonight to review the results.
Would you like me up here or?
The mic, yeah.
The mic, great.
And you all have the presentation planned as well and everything, what I'm saying. First of all, Mayor, thank you very much for having me, Board, thank you so much for having me, it was fantastic, great time. This is the first of the days for Grand Valley, so. Feel free to sign if you have any questions. I have a copy of the report, if you have any questions about that, if you feel free to talk about it. I'm the project manager for ETC Institute. I also wrote this report, the job finding and the qualifications that we're showing and how we took on. ETC Institute's nationally, they're a market research, you know, we do surveys all over the country, over two million people they've surveyed in the United States in the last few years, you know, we've finished out the ECA, we do some work in Canada, a quarter ago, all of those countries in the other world, so we're well known for what we do and we're proud of the purpose tonight, our agenda, kind of talked about the purpose of the survey, why the survey was registered, you know, what we're going to get out of it, the methodologies to administer the survey, kind of gave you the bottom line, that's kind of a military term, you know, what's the bottom line. Well, discussing the findings.
Purpose of the survey is to objectively assess citizen satisfaction, uh, we gather information about priorities, quality of services, uh, we have determined priorities, uh, and, you know, we do that based on city's ongoing planning, so we want this to be kind of, uh, something that helps us to get forward and to make a plan and, you know, make decisions for the future, and that's what we're really good to do. And, uh, lastly, we like to compare, frame values, uh, results with those communities, um, what we did for our benchmarking services project, uh, what we compared to the Kansas City area, as well as communities under thirty thousand residents. Um, and the reason why we picked that threshold is that we get a lot of communities in that range, uh, maybe from twelve to fifteen hundred all the way to, you know, twenty, twenty-seven thousand, uh, residents, you know, kind of fall in that range, um, and we found it best to compare smaller communities to smaller communities, larger communities, you know, larger communities and so on. The, uh, our use to, uh, in the survey, the seven piece survey, each survey takes approximately seven, ten to fifteen, twenty minutes to, to accomplish, um, method administration was primarily male, phone call and email follow-ups were made, um, to see if any areas that were missing surveys or, you know, women or males weren't well representative to make phone calls in order to kind of, uh, shore that out. Uh, sample size is four hundred, uh, community that really got involved, uh, people were really behind us, we have six hundred and ten total results, uh, for margin of error, three point nine percent, at the ninety-five percent level of confidence. Uh, we had a good representation of results throughout the community, as you can see on the G I S map, and I'll bring up a few more of those G I S maps as we get into the presentation. Did the graphics of the survey gender age, uh, race, ethnicity, should, pretty much near consensus, and we'll find out in twenty, twenty-eight, really close to today's numbers. As I said, the bottom line upfront, overall satisfaction is high, Mayor, certainly room for improvement, but from what I saw, you know, overall results are very good. Respondents gave, uh, really good results, eighty-five percent indicated they were either very satisfied or satisfied with the quality of education in the city. Another eighty-four percent, uh, were very satisfied or satisfied with bringing out a physical lift. These numbers kind of smash the local, um, the local benchmark, so I should have taken a little bit more time on this, but our benchmarks for Kansas City area are so overly comprehensive, um, that it's just a little unbelievable. We survey almost every middle tier to large size, uh, municipality in, in the region, uh, Texas is another area of ours, but we're very, uh, well known in, uh, but in the Kansas City area, we survey just about everybody, so you're being compared, you know, very opposite apples with local communities, uh, when we talk about benchmarks, especially the Missouri district average. Uh, my customer service here in the city, um, like the father and daughter does any customer service in the city, you guys are really setting the standards, both nationally and locally. And then the top priority just about for every community in the, in the country is condition of city streets, sidewalks, and infrastructure, I'll get into that in a short bit. Like I said, residents have a positive perception of the community, not only our first major finding. Overall satisfaction perceptions of the community, we saw overall quality of education, which is, you know, studying the standards, I said, uh, as a place to live, as close to its children, how safe you are in your community, over quality of life in the city, overall feeling, feeling of safety in the city, all received very high marks. When we talk about how well the city's funded for development, or overall value of its taxes and fees, we see those numbers drop, but that's just kind of national, kind of in the benchmarking section, you can kind of see that. Here's some more of the G I S maps that I talked about, instead of being a dot map, but it's just yellow, these are the most satisfactory rating. Areas of darker blue indicate higher level of satisfaction, lighter blue, still satisfied, is not satisfied, any off-white colors, um, are maybe more neutral, public presence, and anything orange, which I don't think I have any orange in here, I don't think I saw much in the, in the presentation either, um, you know, those are the satisfied rating. We do this based on some swatches typically, uh, and basically we do that just because we have a, a good sum or a good amount of responses in each one of those areas that are shaded, and you'll see as we go through a few of the other maps, those areas will bounce from blue to yellow and so on. Seventy-seven percent indicated they were very satisfied or satisfied, uh, with the overall feeling of safety in their neighborhoods, and notice again, all areas are in blue, so overall you can suggest that all respondents are either very satisfied, satisfied, and with the safety in their neighborhood, you know, with those outliers, which are always gonna happen. Then when we talk about the major satisfaction of major city services, you know, police services, you know, customer service, chief, customer service, municipal police, and one of the higher ratings that I've ever seen on that, uh, parks and recreation programs and facilities, and the maintenance of the building facilities, um, those are really, really, we see a higher mark here. And then public transportation is kind of at the bottom, and again, effectiveness is , uh, again, is at the bottom. Um, that's not to say that the city's performing poorly in this area, it's more of a suggestion that, uh, overall perception, uh, mixed, um, there were some positive ratings, as you can see about, you know, quarter, uh, of positive perceptions of public transportation, a lot of neutrals in those bottom numbers. Um, so people typically are strong neutral when they just don't have a perception of that issue. We can see public transportation, not a lot of people in, in this area are in value, especially are gonna be dependent upon, upon public transportation, so that's why we see a lot of, um, neutral signs there. Enforcement of city codes and ordinances is just one of the issues, that if you come in contact with it, you're usually not happy, uh, if you come in contact with it, um, it's usually just because you, you're just a fine or infraction. Other people, you know, are either just not aware, or they're just satisfied, because they think that it's a team well taken care of. Second national, or finding is that overall quality of city services among, among the best in the nation, um, something that ETC Institute does to other companies that offer the same or similar, uh, it's offered a different one, because it's a hundred and fifty bucks. All of this data that I'm presenting here are all surveys and based, based on survey results that ETC administered, so we're comparing actual samples, we're not comparing new results to Gallup results or anything like that, uh, these are results based in half, in a database, so. So, I've started the area, so that's been really phenomenal, we'll start with the effectiveness of city communication in public, uh, that is beating both the national, uh, personal awareness testing rates and intensity average, uh, maintenance of city buildings, facilities, again, beating both, uh, parks and recreation programs and facilities, slightly below the regional average, just because we do have some very high performers when it comes to parks and recreation, uh, but really just watching the overall national perception. Uh, and then customer service, we see like the employees, you know, you don't see that a lot, usually standard, but total enforcement and publicity are upset, um, perhaps seventy-two percent indicates that there's one upset in the head of the city, and it is certainly not. Seven of the items on this chart rated significantly higher than the national average and average, again, that's overall quality of education, which is great, and we do that all the time in Grand Valley, um, as a place to live, as a place to raise children, how safe you feel in your neighborhood, and, you know, from Ryan, from your side, I listen to a lot of sports for you, you know, one of the top ten, I have taken community members there, I believe, overall quality of life in the city, and appearance of the neighborhood, and overall quality of service, about about a city. So although some of those results that I was talking about earlier would be mixed, but this really puts it into perspective of how well the law actually are performing. One of my last benchmarking checks here, um, you guys set the standard for all water quality services, something that gets a lot of attention on it. Uh, we do a specific water quality survey, but really, but they don't really see part of the water, so it'd be a little bit of a test to think that, but overall quality of big water, and eighty percent of people say that, and some people are saying excellent big water, and, uh, seventy-eight percent overall quality of billing services, which is just kind of out of the norm for any community. Uh, quality of waste water, again, seventy-one percent, uh, condition of cash wasting, seventy percent, some time in this water, so you're land breakers, uh, again, above the national averages. My next one, even, is, uh, purely based on some of the maps and some of those that are on the map here, city equitable, the value of the city. And what we, we kind of analyze these maps, they have very many problem areas, and we see in areas throughout the community, throughout these G I S maps, there are constantly kind of shallow areas, and what we found is that there are really more than areas. Uh, the area that we see in yellow here, there wasn't a proper number of respondents in that area, so we were able to get a good average of results, they were neutral, but they weren't poor at the same time. So satisfaction with the overall quality of services was about about the city, ninety percent of the city was either in blue or in neutral. Satisfaction with the overall quality of life in the city, again, the whole city in, in blue, which indicates that the city is generally satisfied with the overall quality of life. And our last check, the education system in the city, just kind of dark blue all around. Something that we do at ETC Institute that's a little bit different, uh, the note that the community set, we do have a guy that's helping the community in fact, and we do that by a priority, exactly, you know. Basically, we take our satisfaction ratings and kind of, uh, weigh those against the importance ratings, and what we do is to find out how important these items really are to residents. Um, residents will overstate most often times the importance of items, so it's really difficult just to ask how important something is to somebody and then just take it for it. Code enforcement might be important to somebody whose neighbor's lawn is overrun, uh, you know, water services might be important to somebody that may not actually be on the city's water system. So that's something that we need to watch, and pull up, and put some point satisfaction, kind of cuts through all that, uh, and gets right to the root of everything. So, um, in your report, there's particular indicators, uh, now, number breaks, I like to use a different scale, this is more preemptive, I want this to be kind of a living document, keep this in mind going into the future. Um, I've marked mine, I always mark my high priorities as red, I always bring those to about seven and a half or so, so point seven five or above, I always kind of indicate as red, or something that the city defines, will ever watch, will up. Uh, here we have maintenance of city streets, sidewalks and infrastructure, which is one of the areas that we saw the lowest level of satisfaction, effectiveness of commu, city community, or season, community planning, which took the added emergency to the lowest level of satisfaction, uh, entire public transportation. And then enforcement of personal ordinances, tax, recycling, uh, road collection services, are the items that should be high priority. Contributing upon these items are the ones that give you the most span for the buck for the next couple of years. If we can improve satisfaction in these areas, we'll see improvement of satisfaction for the city overall increase, I believe, so. City maintenance, there are a few items that rank them as that high priority, that is, like, yeah, maintenance of city streets, that's what the city's city street lighting, which can directly influence safety, maintenance of preservation of downtown Grand Valley, which is something, you know, as a smaller city like this, you know, historical downtown, it can be a major point of emphasis to residents, maintenance of preservation, or maintenance of streets, neighborhoods, it's something, you know, in conjunction with major city streets, and can, um, be addressing a flow of, uh, street maintenance, uh, for example, if one part of town, um, was scheduled to receive a street maintenance, or receives new overlays, something like that, you know, if people had two adjacent streets, they're gonna have a lower level of satisfaction because they've noticed their neighbors receive new streets. Until their street is fixed, their level of satisfaction, they're gonna remain low, the importance is gonna remain high. That's kind of a direction, it's been pretty good direction. So again, you know, this is a never ending battle with studies, which is one of the most significant items for cities to have people, um, there's just, that's just always gonna be one of the factors, it's always gonna be at the top of our list. And then, obviously, by, by, by planning, street funding, things like that, did make the list, it was very, um, that's something that, you know, a lot of study and a lot of planning to go into, uh, Lenexa, Lincoln, there's a lot of big cities globally that are, um, really taking a lot of time and study to get people to make any decisions. Um, level of satisfaction is slowly dripping nationwide as well, and, uh, it's just, you know, the brain movement is kind of becoming more vocal, um, there's a lot more talk about that, and, uh, I think that's kind of an indicator as to why satisfaction is lower. Code enforcement, again, um, I can't stress this enough, people don't interact with code enforcement typically, you know, they have a problem, you know, so we're trying to add color to the record. Uh, enforcement cleanups, trash debris, emptying property, knowing cutting weeds, those are going to be the top ones, all about enforcement, trash, cleaning, street maintenance and neighborhoods, uh, enforcement of security, many of those are, uh, probably, and then some of the items that are kind of, uh, very high reading, uh, and, and those are important, very important. enforcement of time and relation form, enforcement of animal coats, all kind of hit those with non-problem areas. And again, it's, it's simple measures to be taken, uh, but we do a long time study of the city of Alaska, uh, that's kind of one of our recent partners, based on, um, they send out a reminder to residents, uh, to be mindful and report code enforcement violations. Um, we saw that satisfaction was relatively good, and so we didn't stop sending reminders, and then we had more code enforcement violations, just out of luck, and went down, um, they tried multiple different things, it's just, it's just a cyclical thing, you know, in the staring, in the summer, we met a lot of code violations, we saw a lot of, a lot of low level satisfaction, in the winter and fall, there's a lot of code violations, I don't wanna say anything going on, uh, base these satisfaction rates, again, we do a quarterly survey for Alaska as well. Cleaning and building, new types of, uh, development in the city, that's one of those problem areas, and types of new resources to control development in the city, do that in the future, so. Communication, public libraries, so that's kind of an, that's where we put, uh, a few questions on the survey, we'll get into that. Communication, quality of citizen magazines, pretty used, see the highest level of satisfaction. Uh, parks and recreation program guide, those are really the two items that receive the highest levels of satisfaction. The level of public involvement in local decision making, and what can do on those tough items, people, you know, medium stations kind of be involved, and sometimes that's difficult to overcome, uh, what we found from a, a recent poll was, uh, I think ninety percent of people only come to these types of meetings to receive a recognition or divorce of, uh, of those, uh, that indicate they go to those types of meetings, those people aren't really interested in that, so, we find that people want to be involved, but finding those ways to become involved are difficult often times, and most of the time people are only involved if asked to be involved. Uh, brand awareness, uh, we put this logo on our survey, and we asked, uh, how aware are we of the logo, sixty-two percent responded, put in the logo and any kind of advertisement, not to say that they weren't aware of the logo, um, because when we asked that, actually eighty-five percent of people almost were actually aware of the logo, and were aware of the logo, uh, in that form. Sixty percent of respondents indicated they would not change the logo, there were a few different options on what could be the logo, or what would you do if you could do something to the logo, that enjoyed it, people said they wouldn't touch it, uh, sixteen percent said that it needed to be changed, so, very small minority, and it's a bit like they don't see it.
How was this question asked, if you don't mind?
At the very back of your report, um, before the appendix, we have, uh, survey content, let me pull that out, sorry, I don't have a minute here. So it is on page one oh three, it was question fourteen, it says, what are some of your general perceptions of the current city of Grand Valley logo? Uh, some of the options, the first option, I would not change anything, sixty percent, I would change the color, it needs to be updated, which receives sixty percent, uh, it is too plain, uh, it is difficult to understand, it does not say who we are, or is not unique enough, and, uh, further forward in our report, um, on page... Sorry? Page two, uh, the main report is the chart, it's right down to the spine, so it's definitely like eight, eight, nine, three, four, but there just weren't so, there just weren't that many responses to any of those items. Uh, sixty percent said they wouldn't change the thing, sixteen percent said it needs to be updated, and, uh, it does not say who we are, eight percent said it was too plain, another eight percent said it's not unique enough, six percent said I would change the color, uh, two percent said it's difficult to understand, and then four percent, yeah.
Can you have represent how many people have responded here?
Um, in the tabular data section, we are testing, you know, uh, in the tabular data section, we have six hundred and eighty-seven responses, people could respond in multiple ways, and so it wasn't a single response question. Three hundred and sixty-six said they would not change a thing, um, a hundred said it needed to be updated, thirty-six percent, or thirty-six, uh, said I would need to change the color, fifty-four says it doesn't say who we are, forty-seven says it's not unique enough, um, and then the other responses are located below that on page sixty-seven. Uh, and it was a mixture of you, uh, however, sixty percent, you know, just indicated that, in my, in my professional opinion, it was more so that it doesn't need to be changed, uh, it's kind of like, it's not what it's supposed to be, but, uh, but a lot, a lot, a lot can go into that, and I think a follow-up question, you know, could be useful.
A follow-up question, like if the logo was changed to, to bring in more business because of professional organization has indicated that it should be changed, would you prefer to change it?
Yeah, we wouldn't want to leave too much, but if we did have some information that indicated that, you know, a more professional or updated logo, you know, bring in more business, if there was some kind of, the tough question to ask without being-
I get it, thank you very much.
Yep. Uh, page development, uh, a few questions put in, you know, these questions that we don't ask a lot, so, this information is kind of interesting, um, it's more useful for city planners and people in, you know, your position in the board, than anything, so. Overall satisfaction, the blue here indicates pace is too slow, the red indicates it's too fast, and the white is just right, so we see a lot of white, especially in the family, residential development, um, office development, industrial development, all of that seems to be at the right pace. Some people think, you know, about fifty percent or so, believe that industrial development is just too slow, um, over half, we think, uh, things are just too slow, um, then, you know, forty-eight percent thinks that economy and housing development, uh, is, is just too high, and we, we indicate that there's gonna be more occupied, um, that's, that's a common thing, you know, people that are long-term residents, especially in communities don't want to see more rent occupied, uh, economy, operating area, it's a pretty standard area, you know, with the shop, I mean, it's- These are really questions that we've never asked, uh, these were very, uh, I mean, these are city, um, not to say that they're core questions, but just they're not asked, it's very individual, uh, to y'all. Eighty-eight percent responded, believe the city should be more proactive, or proactive in attracting new and interesting businesses, redevelopment in a long major business quarters in Grand Valley, uh, which is a vast majority. We can break those results down a little bit, if somebody's more interested in that, uh, but just overall, you can take, you know, that for what it is. Um, most people strongly agree, agree. Again, most people strongly agree, agree that the overall commercial areas in Grand Valley is better than it was five years ago, so there is improvement. And then to encourage business redevelopment, the city should use tax incentives and other economic development tools. Received, um, a lot of support, um, but it also has some mutual responses, people probably just weren't sure exactly what that means, and a little bit more follow-up data would be good before acting on it. Proposed aquatic facilities, also a topic to stand in the survey. We'll get into this just briefly, um, when we ask about aquatic facilities, we do a lot of parks and recreation surveys that we do, which is one of our niche markets. We do all over the country, and it's about a hundred and fifty this year. Proposed aquatic facilities are probably the most popular type of facility, uh, they're not there, everybody needs to go there, but everybody loves the idea. And it's because the, the features and things that go into it, that are proposed, that are, that are in there, um, always sound very fun and exciting, and as you can see here. Only kayak and nothing to Ninja Warrior, obviously, for us to really widen, but didn't see large swallows support, so. Everybody's pretty, and it's important, just about everything. Um, so, it's, it's tough to say if one thing is more important than the other. Um, you know, obviously swim lessons is kind of gonna be the furthest reaching thing when it comes to children. And recreational swimming area, again, very part of reaching, just about everybody should enjoy some recreational swimming time. Water aerobics and exercise programs, again, good for the health, also very far reaching. So, when you're looking at this type of thing, just try to think about how many houses can you, so, use these things, and then it kind of lends the idea to how supportive they are of them. So, if there's a large group of households that could participate, or could take advantage of that facility, amenity or feature, um, we're probably gonna see a large, uh, large support, uh, for it as well. So, that's why kayak and nothing to Ninja Warrior, of course, to root for bottom. But, but very common items, uh, that are on these types of survey. And then multi-manual, you know, those do better at support, um, probably the most substantive thing to go into, and the aquatic facilities, that is, I don't know. We also, importance of things, again, importance can be overstated, especially when self-reported, um, a lot of things when self-reported can be overstated, this is one of them. Ladybug swim lessons, definitely gonna be one of the most important items for people, just again, most people can use them, so, to do this way that it's important. Water aerobics, very cool, recreational swimming, warm water pool, zero, definitely, also things that are commonly important to people across the country. And then kayak and nothing, that in board, birthday party is less important. But I know from, from, from experience, birthday parties, basically, can be very traditional, and in board aquatic facilities, things like that, so, um, you know, it's just, it's after, you know, it is interesting, and about eight percent of people indicated kayak and Ninja Warrior, of course, is, you know, important to the household. Actually, drop that down, it's just a, you know, people. In summer, about satisfaction is very high, uh, the city should be really happy with further adding how they did it here. I think that when we took these results, I was expecting a little bit differently, you know, from, from, like, a lot of families in the area. We're gonna get into things, just a piece of positive overall for the city, uh, especially communities around. And I think that's something really important to take in mind when we do these results. Um, if the city chooses to do it again, we, we always recommend two years, that's the maximum. Um, you see, uh, you do a kind of what actions the board took, and what actions the leaders took, and then kind of implement those, give them time to run reports, take them to the polls. When we do that, we can relate to turn data, and I think that's what's most important, uh, is just how are we performing every time, what are we doing, and sort of helping, what are we doing that just didn't seem to work, or act higher. And a lot of communities, that's, that's what's to that. Personally, for me, the trends are, are really, are really important. Since we don't have any trend data right now, it's difficult to say what's gonna happen in the future, but, um, based on the goals that we have, I, I imagine it's gonna be... Um, so, our goal's four hundred, uh, typically we'll nail about seven times our goal, um, so if I had to guess, it'd be about twenty-eight hundred, so there's...
Well, six hundred and ten out of twenty-eight hundred, is that significant?
Yeah, I would say if our goal was four hundred, and, you know, if it was four hundred in a community, it's bad, I was worried that we were gonna be struggling towards the end, we can't do it, kinda manage. Um, but we just kind of demolished our goal, and kept on running. I imagine if we would've left this open for another month, we probably would've, probably settled, uh, what we had, so.
Notice of fifty-fifty between male and female, is that, is that significant in any way?
That should be pretty much worth that, um, especially with the margin of error of about four percent. If we look at Lincoln Bureau numbers, um, looking at these the other day, didn't write them down, I think it's about forty-nine percent male in communities, uh, so it's gotta break down fifty-fifty to use it as cover, and, 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 uh... I thought you'd be a question, uh, Dr. Lane Payton, just to discuss the D M, she developed, uh, a lot of dollars on his son, uh, first to Payton, or the, uh, the meth dollars he had, uh, and, uh, some of the, uh...
We did see explanation on one of these here. So, I, I'm not gonna go give it to us, but page twenty-seven here. Overall satisfaction with city leadership. Apparently, we are less ethical than the US government, but we're more effective. I'm confused. Page twenty-seven, the bottom graph.
Overall satisfaction with city leadership.
Yeah.
You may be a few pages off, you cited one oh four earlier, and it was actually one oh one in our packet, so.
Uh, it's probably just, it just, I just, it's just, it says how effecti- effective, no, how ethically the city conducts business. We're at forty-nine percent. The US government's at fifty-four percent. And Missouri state government's at sixty-three percent. Kind of hurt by that a little bit. But then we go down to the next one, and it's overall quality of leadership, and we're higher than both.
So, what we're saying, morality is out of the question. As long as you're doing the job that you're supposed to be doing, the morality of the action, right? Um, these are perceptions, that's why, how ethically conducts, how ethically the city conducts business is all perception. Um, as you can see here, there's not a ton of people in the audience tonight, I'm not sure how, tax the house, it's on, on some medium.
I don't know.
A lot of people just start to moan about these types of, like, actions or procedures, or things like that, uh, you know, it's not the, the Morris title, the stuff that we did, uh, tonight, you know, but...
I mean, this is something you see other, I mean, that's just, I thought it was odd, that it was lower, but then higher, so I didn't...
If I could peruse the nation as a whole, you'd see, you'd see the red line come down further, but we're talking about smaller municipalities, where people are a little bit more involved sometimes, and just a little bit more supervised, and, uh, a little bit of recovery. I think the, the main indicator here is the overall effectiveness, uh, to the government, and the city administrative point of staff, and then the quality of the leadership. Those are saying, you know, tangible, you know, quality of managers versus, you know, how ethical the city conducts business. There's, there's not a scandal or anything like that, but who really knows how ethical, um, you know, the city is in terms of, 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 so, that's just, so, thanks for noting that, uh, who's that next? We'll see how that turns.
I liked this, I thought this was, um, a positive, I, I think it was a chance for certain people in the community to have a voice that aren't on social media, or choose not to, um, partake in those discussions. I mean, I, I would see this as a more true reflection of the community versus some of the other things we see.
One thing that's interesting I noticed, too, is that, you know, we get beat up about code enforcement a lot, but code enforcement was like, num- was ranked number three as the, what they wanted to see the most improvement made in, was more code enforcement.
I think our social media issues are, um, nay, and nay, you know, garbage, yes, but this is a way for people to speak without speaking, if that makes sense.
So, our return rate, I mean, our return rate on these, in your opinion, was?
Much higher than...
Because when you look at it, you're thinking six hundred out of twenty-eight hundred, it doesn't seem great, but...
It is, yeah, it is. And, uh, you know, it's had a margin of error frequently, and so, and I mean, it's been a little bit of community that's sad, but it's, it's, it just took a chance, people are really behind it, uh, and when you, uh, you know, people can get on foot with media, and be coarse, and rude, and, you know, really start anger, and things like that. So, when you're, um, so, let's say we're getting a survey, and you're willing to fill it out, and you have six hundred and ten people willing just to fill it out, and all that, and, um, like, do you mind, uh, a very, you know, positive percentage of it?
Kind of it's a better indicator of what we might need to make changes on versus what complaints are, you know?
Probably have to throw one of those out, 'cause one of those surveyed is me, but, that's the margins there, you know?
I'll throw in there and find it, we'll re-run it.
I did.
Anybody else got one of those?
And I said I would've used a Ninja Warrior, of course, I saw you laughing over there.
The funny thing is, my, my dau- Harper and I, my daughter, was, we got to that part, I was having her help me, and we're both like, Ninja Warrior, of course, what, what is that?
It's kind of a little poppy. It's something that you borrow from a pool with not much top. You know, it's a suit, the white cards are there, the pools are there, you can drop that right on top. I've been a part of a few usability studies, we don't do this ourselves, to be more neat and simple, um, that is something that, you know, bring in money, that, 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 um, those Ninja Warrior aquatic facilities, um, I thought.
Well, we even, we even kind of talked about it at the park for a meeting, having some sort of profit-type course, or something like that, so...
That's a good support for it?
Yep.
So, it's something we could put in, and then every police rec- recruit has to build a passage, that's a certain amount of time. Like a time force, okay, you have to do this in under a minute. Anyone else have any questions, yeah?
Just kind of say, this is one of those things that, um, it's impossible to get the data that, that this provides, I mean, this, this is just, uh, goldmine for data, for us to set our priorities. Um, we're gonna start doing community surveys more frequently to set those priorities, and that will also become part of the board's strategic planning process. That way, we're not, uh, just, you know, plucking ideas out of the air on what our priorities should be. We, we can have, uh, an idea of what the citizens want, and you can choose among those, so. E T C did a great job of this, I appreciate the, the help of this.
Okay, next item in the presentation is C I P project update. Mr. Mayor, members of the board, at the last, um, meeting, when we were talking about the, uh, parking lot, one of the items that came up was, um, I think Alderman Bannan had suggested a review, some of the upcoming projects that we have for transportation, since that's one of the things that we hear about, uh, so frequently. So, I've had Rick put together just a, a review of the upcoming years, and, um, give a summary of that.
I should have in front of you, just a two-page document, I'm not gonna have the same level of detail from last year. But basically, this year's roads are just outlined. Uh, keep in mind, these are from the C I P that we had, uh, seven June, so, that's a fluid document, we're actually gonna be working on that here shortly, and, and we look forward every five-year cycle. Add roads that need to be completed. We'll call a few meetings back, and talk about how we pick some of those roads, or, or, street, uh, public service, numbers, all that type of thing. So, this is just kind of a quick rundown of the type of the growth that we have, we're looking at this year, and for next year. Turn the page over, we're, we're, we're in the very same area. We have a lot of developments in there from recent years, and I think two thousand and six was really related to a lot of them, we have, we need to catch them in them already, but we need to be soon patched from the trees, and, 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 a lot of problems. Currently, we're looking at twenty-twenty, exposed roads, we're looking, a lot of the streets in Tyler Farm area, we'll kind of put in around the same time, really, two thousand related to these, so, a lot of times, some issues, like, we wouldn't, so, so, um, and it's, it's a big street, uh, we need to look at, yeah, for this subdivision, but, you know, I would, sure, we'll pay for it, so...
Can I ask a question? The old part of town was supposed to be taking care of on some of those roads. I know Front Street has got, I think I even called up and explained, and explained to them, uh, that it's crashing along certain sides, and I mean, it's... I tore my roof, my, uh...
Yeah, we're, we're, we're gonna look at, on a particular issue. Keep in mind that we did do a lot of the downtown streets a couple of years ago, and those were just maintenance issues. We did do a edge mill in over there, I think, Front Street, a lot of, I'm sure we...
Come on out, I'll take you for a walk, 'cause you're gonna hear about this.
Deny that there's an issue there, but we did do a lot of downtown streets that were...
I just have a quick question. Um, I'm looking on this for current year, and I sh- I see, uh, how do I pronounce it, crime, sorry, crime?
We can call it B.
M, and I know I've been down that street many times this year, um, it's, it doesn't look like there's done anything except for some patchwork.
Uh, there's the, this is that little tiny section on that top picture. We did some waterline repairs through there a couple of years back, so there is some patching that goes through that area, so that's the area time we're talking about, actually.
And that's the street that comes through, up to Front Street, and it's a lake, when it rains, they have been out checking the drains, and it's still a problem.
This overlay just wouldn't address the drainage issues overly.
Not unless there's some depressions or anything in the asphalt, these are just overlays.
So, and, uh, for the current year overlays, all of the roads that you see, um, uh, from Mentor through Lone Star and Eagles Parkway are, uh, those are projects that'll be edged and overlaid, or have edge mill and overlay in October of this year, so. See, uh, work on that beginning shortly.
Is this by chance, uh, accessible by the public, like on our website, where they can...
C I P is on the website, isn't it? Yeah, like, yeah, our capital improvements plan is. Something that if, I know we could definitely do a push to, you know, drive people to that.
I think it, it, it occurs to me that it seems a bit of an unknown to a lot of folks, and when they raise the issue, and I think we saw it in the survey results and things like that, it seems that, uh...
I've, I've shared the list a few times on my Facebook page, and, but that's not everybody in town, so. Man, I know a lot of what we're, what I hear, too, is neighborhoods north of town, and a lot of that is just because we have some issues to stop it down, I think. All these roads were put in, probably been a two- or three-year span of each other. Now, let me ask you this, I know it's not much, but we talked parking lot money, we're looking at, what, one-twenty for that, and we knocked it down to sixty? Is that, is there any project on the fringe we weren't gonna do, the sixty-thousand dollar project, that...
They don't have a specific location, or you can track, and then we can turn the load, and see where we can stretch it, location.
Especially if there's something close to where we're already gonna be?
Yeah, we could take a look at C I P and see if there was anything indicated that was near the cutoff.
Kind of, sometimes we get any, to end up doing more than what we thought anyways, because once they get there, some work, they can do more.
I think as Nancy said, one of the biggest issues in the center part of Grand Valley is water. She indicated it on Front Street, but I can tell you, it exists on Cannon, it exists on Elizabeth, there's a lot of streets that flood with a minor rain.
Well, it's just, I get to hear from, uh, several neighbors, every time we get rain, and they did dig up and go down, and that's to check the drainage pipe, and there is an issue there on it, because thing originally was the, uh, limits on the city at one time...
And there is an issue there on it, because theme originally was the limits on the city at one time, I believe. And that's what I was told. And, uh, that's why there's a, the connection or whatever.
You're talking about where the road turns there and it backs up? Yeah, I thought, I sent that in.
You haven't listened to it?
No, I'm talking about theme in front.
The zuplet where it's turned, I sent you guys a month or so ago, where it makes the turn there.
I'll be like, just come out any time it's raining, I'm going to show you, bring your swimming suit though, or flipper or flappers. Because you might need them. Unfortunately, we're dealing with the water that's coming from the airport. I mean, it's coming from the airport, it's coming, you know. How many times have you been out to Cannon looking at the flood all the way around our property?
I don't know until we do reconstructions, there much that we can do to capture that?
Um, I don't believe so. I mean, the, part of the, the Cannon Street, um, backup was addressed with the interchange, or with the Main Street project. Of course, there's still water that, that does back up through there, um, north of, on, on Front Street. I mean, I, I, short of redesigning and installing stormwater, um, I don't, I don't know what else we could do right now.
Yeah, I mean, those, those are big issues that would have to be reconstructed. Right now, we're just talking about related things. So those types of issues that you're discussing are the types of things that we'll get, do an appropriate reconstruction.
Any questions, comments about CIP?
Thank you.
All right. Seen no presentations in and no public hearings, move on to ordinances.
Your Honor, this is, uh, bill B eighteen dash fifteen. It is the second reading, and it is an ordinance to establish, uh, the City of Green Valley, Missouri's annual tax levies in 2018 calendar year, general, municipal government operations, retirement of general obligation debt, park maintenance and public health services, will be ordinance two four four two, second reading.
Hang on just a second.
Right.
I said, hang on just a second. What was the ordinance number?
Two four four two.
Mayor, I move that we accept bill B eighteen dash sixteen for its second reading, making, uh, bring it back for, and making it ordinance twenty four forty two.
I have motion, Alderman West, approve bill B eighteen dash fifteen for its second reading, making ordinance twenty four forty two. Got a second? Second, Alderman Bannan. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this is the final read of the, um, tax levy hearing, uh, or the, the setting of the tax levy for 2018. Um, issue was published on August sixteenth, we had a public hearing on August twenty seventh, and, uh, subsequent workshops and reads. I want you to answer any questions.
Questions, any discussion? Seen none, non-fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
West.
Yes.
Stratton.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Cotton.
Yes.
Edley.
Yes.
Bannan.
Yes.
Six zero, Mayor. Next ordinance is bill number B eighteen dash sixteen. It also is the second read, it will be ordinance two four four three. And it is an ordinance waiving and or reducing certain plan review, bill increment, inspection and TAP fees associated with construction by political subdivisions within the city limits of Green Valley. Second reading, ordinance two four four three.
I move that we accept bill number B eighteen dash sixteen for its second reading, making it ordinance number two four four three.
I have motion, Alderman Bannan says approve bill B eighteen dash sixteen for its second reading, making it ordinance twenty four forty three. Got a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Headley. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this is the ordinance that we've talked about, um, at length regarding, uh, fee reduction for the Green Valley School District, TJC Fire Protection, um, the, the Mid-Continent Public Library, as well as, uh, Jackson County Government. Um, this will eliminate the building permit and plan review fees and waive a portion of the TAP fees associated with new construction for them.
Questions, any discussion? Seen none, non-fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Bannan.
Yes.
Edley.
Yes.
Cotton.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Stratton.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Six zero, Mayor. Next bill is bill eighteen, uh, seventeen. It is first reading, ordinance approving the final plat of Rosewood Hills, ninth plat, phase A. First reading, bill B eighteen dash seventeen.
I move that, uh, we accept bill number, uh, B eighteen seventeen for its first reading and bring it back for its second reading by title only.
I have motion, Alderman Cotton, approve bill B eighteen dash seventeen for its first reading, bring it back by title for its second reading. Got a second? Second, Alderman Stratton. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this is, uh, just, uh, the approval of the final plat for the ninth, um, plat of Rosewood Hills. I will let Mr. Arroyo answer any questions that you may have.
This is for your overview, basically, this is a, back in, uh, Pittsburgh last year, the PMG looked at this, uh, the winter plat, this particular, uh, development of Rosewood. And this is the eighth ninth plat, which is north of the lake. So September twelfth meeting, PMG did the first, this is the final plat. It doesn't meet the criteria that was set out in the winter plat.
Any other questions?
Pointing curiosity, there's a lot of construction going on out there. Looks like in this area, I mean, so once the initial plat's set, construction's going to start. This is, this just finalized, this is a paper word?
Right. So the other thing I have a curiosity is that there's still lots of land behind that to the north of it. This is not just the final plat for now, or is there, could there be more in the future?
This is the final plat, plat for that phase. So there is additional phases. There's one additional phase in the north, and there's actually a couple of potential phases. There is some land through the north that is actually outside of the city limits there.
All non-fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Six zero, first, Mayor. That is final ordinance. Next is resolution eighteen dash forty. Resolution by the Board of Alderman, City of Green Valley, authorizing the city administrator purchase a modular liquid spray system. Resolution R eighteen dash forty.
Mayor, I move that we accept resolution number R dash eighteen forty as read.
I have motion, Alderman Coleman, to accept resolution R eighteen dash forty. Got a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Cotton. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this was a scheduled replacement, um, of a calcium chloride sprayer for our snow removal program. Uh, Mr. Arroyo can answer any questions, may have.
This is replacing an existing, uh, device that we have that's currently, as you know, with snow, it's calcium chloride, it rusts quite extensively, so we've done a lot of repairs on this. It is basically just replacing that device. Uh, we call it a modular one, because the hopper separated from the pump, which is separated from the boom, which means the connection exists to the, we need two, we can actually do it until that, if we're able to ensure it's, it's not a hopper for it. But anyway, this is, we have stairs or...
Any questions, discussion? Seen none, non-fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Six zero, Mayor. Finally, resolution R eighteen dash forty one. Resolution by the Board of Alderman, City of Green Valley, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to enter into a forty-eight month lease agreement with Rico Americas Corporation for copier and printer equipment. Resolution R eighteen dash forty one.
Mayor, I move that we accept resolution R eighteen dash forty one as read.
I have motion, Alderman West, approve resolution R eighteen dash forty one. Got a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Bannan. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this is, uh, our current, uh, we currently have a lease through, uh, Rico that expires in June of, uh, next year. As we approached budgeting time, we started, uh, visiting with Rico about entering into a new agreement. Uh, one of the reasons is that, uh, we were able to drop the price per copy, we were able to get newer equipment, and some of the equipment that we have, uh, does not, um, does not interact with Microsoft, or Office three sixty-five, uh, the version that we have. So, uh, Kalila was able to work with our rep and negotiate, um, a new lease agreement. It's covered under the US Communities, uh, bid program, so that means that it's competitively bid, and, uh, any local government agency can use it and it's guaranteed the same price. Uh, that being said, we saw a slight increase, uh, we're talking about forty dollars a month in the machine costs, but we saw a, um, essentially a one cent per copy reduction. Uh, so it, it almost balances out to a neutral, um, payment, uh, as far as increase or decrease goes. So, happy to answer any questions, but this is a, just simply a forty-eight month lease for the replacement of nine copiers and printers that we have.
Any questions? All right. Seen none, non-fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Six zero, Mayor. That concludes the ordinances and resolutions.
All right, next item, the city's minister reports.
Nothing to report, your honor, thank you.
Next item, the city administrator and staff's report.
Start with Mr. Murphy.
Uh, Mayor, Board, just wanted to let you know that, uh, Coes went out and did, uh, the second sound check of the year for, uh, Valley's Wee Wood on September fifteenth. Um, and he put all those results together and they were within the parameters of the traditional schedule.
The loud noise they heard this weekend was not coming from the racetrack, it was coming from the, uh, drag strip, which is, uh, grandfathered in, so the noise wasn't going to count. I just thought I'd throw that in because I had some people asking me about it.
Well, they went back after midnight too, so.
Yeah, it's bad.
Cause of...
Mr. Dady?
Uh, Mayor, Board, we are approximately one month out from our sixth annual Trail Retreat event. Um, it's, uh, always out at Butterfly Trail Park. Uh, that event is scheduled for Friday, October twenty-sixth. And it runs from six thirty to eight thirty P.M. Uh, I know Sarah's already, uh, is accepting applications, uh, from local vendors here that will be out on the trail. City staff has met, uh, already, and we've already started kind of the planning process, uh, for traffic flow, need, activities that we'll have, uh, out there that night, so. Please, uh, put that on your calendar, it's Friday, October twenty-sixth, from six thirty to eight thirty.
Mr. Arroyo.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, I just wanted to give you guys a reminder of the household hazardous waste. That we are, I'm going to, we, at the, uh, Texas County Public Works facility. So, I have, uh, danger or anything like that to get rid of.
And Teresa.
Uh, Mayor, members of the board, um, I need you all to discuss November twelfth. We have a meeting scheduled for that day, but it's Sedge Room Day, um, so we need to look at rescheduling that meeting. It is kind of right in the middle of when we'll be looking at approving, um, budget and budget time. That's why we're looking at a considered reschedule.
There's another poll. Okay.
I can do that, because what, yeah...
The same, same, we can look at the same week, or we can look at, um, the following week. I wouldn't want to push it, I wouldn't want to move it up to November fifth. Uh, October twenty-ninth is actually, um, what we're going, we're planning at it right now, planning on scheduling the budget workshop on October twenty-ninth. Um, the idea being that we can work through, uh, the entire budget that evening. Um, we went through it quite a bit faster last year than we did previous years, uh, so it seems like we're kind of maybe getting it down to a, a little bit of an art, where you guys are more forgiving, one or the other.
Oh, but I added that whole mayor's list this year.
Yeah, I know.
That's, I'm, I'm one of the old mickeys for that.
Okay. You'd be here on the thirtieth, well. Uh, so what we were thinking is October twenty-ninth at six P.M. That's all of the respondents to the poll that we sent out on Doodle, uh, indicated they were available that night. Um, Alderman Coleman, I think you're the only one that we weren't sure about for October twenty-ninth, Monday. Okay, so if we, we do...
That's a Monday night.
Yes, ma'am. Um, we will, so we'll go ahead and schedule that at six P.M. on Monday. With that being said, uh, we would like to try and isolate that as the budget workshop, and if we need additional workshops, we would just place it, well, we could do it either the fifth, or we could place it as a workshop before the next board meeting. Does that make sense what I'm saying? So we could look at like the thirteenth or fourteenth, we can send out those dates, or...
Send them out, there we go.
Okay. My only concern with doing, uh, having the workshop on the twenty-ninth and then having a BOA on the fifth with a workshop before that is, I don't know that we'll be able to get the information turned around and back out to the board in time for them to study it.
Why don't you send out, yeah, send out like the thirteenth, fourteenth, fifteenth, and nineteen, nineteen too, just to be sure.
I mean, it's only on the fourteenth.
All right. We will, um, Teresa, we send out a poll for that tomorrow. And that's, uh, yeah, so, uh, the only other thing that I was going to say is that, uh, KCADC has their annual, uh, dinner upcoming at the, um, uh, downtown, a gong blank, where it's at Teresa.
Oh, my goodness.
It's, it's, uh, downtown.
The Kansas City Convention Center.
Yeah, it's the convention center. Uh, the city used to buy an entire table, which is ten people. Um, we never had that much interest. I know in years past, Yolanda, you, you attend the, the dinner with, or the luncheon with us as well this year. Um, I'm having, uh, Ken and Teresa attend, uh, that, and we're trying to get, kind of get a number of, of, uh, if any of the board members want to attend, uh, attend that as well. Uh, the partnership has offered to host the table, or to host the CIC this year. So if anyone is interested in, uh, attending that, the date is, I had pulled up, what is it?
October ninth.
October ninth. So...
From eleven until one thirty?
Yeah, eleven, uh, eleven A.M. to one thirty on October ninth. So if you are interested, um, just RSVP or, or send me an email within the next, uh, few days. That way, I would say probably by Wednesday, uh, that way we can get a count over to KCADC as to how many will be attending.
What day is that?
It is a Wednesday.
No, literally, it's Tuesday. Did you take a night?
Tuesday, I'm sorry, I was, I'm back in September.
November the ninth on a Friday.
November, that's why you were throwing me off.
Yes, no, I'm sorry, November the ninth.
November the ninth, Friday, from eleven to one thirty. The Truman Heartland Gala is this weekend, thank you for mentioning that. Um, so if you have RSVP'd for that, uh, there'll be a reminder, uh, coming out, uh, probably two, tomorrow... So, if you have RSVP'd for that, there'll be a reminder coming out probably Tuesday, tomorrow or Wednesday for the event. We'll try to do the similar thing that we do with these events and meet at City Hall for those of you who want to meet with us, and then carpool down there. Uh, we'll let you know, for those of you that aren't aware, Sarah's, Sarah's grandmother passed away yesterday, so she's going to be out of the office. It's actually, she lived up in Iowa, she's going to be out of the office this week because of that. So, for any of those public information needs that you may have, just contact Kalila, myself, or most preferably Ken. As he is her direct supervisor. But we'll get, we'll get the notice and reminders, everything out this, this week for upcoming events. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Right, next up, the board of aldermen reports and comments. Alvin Stratton?
I have a question, with getting the results from the ETC thing, it reminded me of the pay scale study that was being done, I cannot remember the name of it.
Oh, the compensation study? We have preliminary data back on it, we're waiting for more substantial results. Kalila, what timeframe would you say? Yeah, we're still looking at end of November, beginning of December before we're going to have the final report.
Right, Alvin Cotton?
Well, can I brag? I want to say thank you to all the people that know the racetrack, and all those silly people on Front Street, and the few in between, including our mayor and his wife, bringing me down to camp. We got eight hundred and twenty pounds that we had smashed, four hundred and ninety-two dollars for food cantries, and I was blessed, a lady gave me twenty dollars to cover that, and the rest of it's go to fix bicycles for Christmas presents, because it is. Now, I'm bragging at the racetrack, and I was blessed by a raccoon family bringing me over another hundred dollars to put for our food pantry service in Green Valley. We have had three flows in the years' time. So, I'm pretty happy with all the wonderful people that contributed to this, and I'm proud of all of them. And I've already gone to three of the pantries, and I got the other three to go to. And now I'm waiting to get my bicycles in order so we can pass out some wonderful Christmas presents. City Mayor started it, and I found the home for his, and then, all of a sudden, I got some new, uh, there's secondhand bicycles, but we're getting them ready. And I'm just proud of the whole, everybody, look what we can do, we're working together. And don't live on my street and think you're throwing away a cane, because I'll catch you.
Uh, Alvin Coleman?
Yeah, see, you and I had conversations sometime back about Rosewood Hills and speeding issues. Finally have a date that we'd like to try to get you up there, um, and that would be October the twenty-fifth. And there, it's going to be an H O rating from six thirty to eight. They'd also like to see if we could get the Sheriff's Department out, somebody from the Sheriff's Department, I don't know if you have any contacts, or if you want me to contact them directly, but, you and I can speak afterwards if that's okay with you.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Alvin Hedley?
Rick, can I just thank you for the information you kept feeding me to answer a lot of the constituents' questions, I appreciate the input.
Alvin West?
I just want to thank the mayor and his wife for putting on a wonderful parade, even though it was raining both days. Oh, yeah. I think that you did an excellent job, things turned out very, very well.
Alvin Baman?
Uh, nothing to report tonight, thank you.
Can I add one thing?
Time's up. Sir?
No, I have had, I get people to call, one of the ones, the people have called the school, been to the school when there's activity, and they're upset because there's no railing on the bleachers. And this is coming from grandparents that want to go see their grandchildren play. They asked me if I'd say it, so I just wanted to comment, I didn't complain, the school doesn't have any railings to go up the bleachers.
Adding that and they do the. That, that will be resolved after this year, because we'll have new bleachers next year.
Oh, why didn't they tell this to them? They had called the school, several of them told me they had.
Probably something fairly new, wasn't it, with the lay of the pond issue, though?
I don't know, that's, depends on where they called, if they called administration at the district office, they would know.
Okay.
But the administration in the actual building might not know that.
Okay, I'll tell them.
Uh, next up, the board's mayor's report.
Uh, just one thing, uh, some of you might have been in contact or been aware of our sign issue we had with the signs being pulled that were not, they were in violation, but. So, I think, and I'm trying to talk around about this already, I think we need to look, you may have already started, look at that sign ordinance and kind of seeing what, if we can make any adjustments. Because I, because I know everything that we pulled was within, you know, violation, because it's, you know, it's also back on the curb, I know that some of those two real estate signs, and if you pull a real estate sign on a Friday, that could, you know, hurt someone's ability to sell their house, maybe.
Open house sign. There weren't any front yard real estate signs.
Open house signs, okay.
Open house signs, but I talked to our board of commissioners about doing that on Monday, and probably wouldn't have.
Is that something we could be putting down?
We don't.
Certainly not, because then it ties our hands to go out and remove signs. I, I think it's a good practice, um, and if we want to develop some sort of policy, we can, uh, but the.
Well, I'm saying, if this is something that we probably need to relay somehow, that, you know, this is, I won't do it, because I know people, you know, some people get such a gravel sign that gets pulled, and we have other people who put a gravel sign up and then never take it down. So, I mean, you know.
It's also important to remember, too, that the reason we did it was because we had a lot of signs, I think it was twenty-nine.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
You know, you had one of those, we get hit, people were there, and people want to do it, and a lot of people doing crosswalk that day. But I think doing it on Monday, just kind of getting into a, I feel, I feel, we have been very good, and it took more, so, probably let that go a little longer than we would have, which I think, kind of got people with the impression that people have a problem, and of course, we went out, did it, got, so. Hopefully doing it for a routine kind of schedule, hopefully create some of that.
We've tried to think of ways that we could communicate this to the public, I mean, unfortunately, we can't put that it's going to be done on Tuesday, because then people are going to cry foul any other time that their signs pulled, um, regardless of where it's at. On the other hand, we see a citizen survey that says that the community as a whole wants to see code enforcement increased. So, I, I think part of the issue was there, one, we did it on a Friday, which is not a premier day to pull signs. Two, there was a few people that were very vocal through social media about it, that made it seem like a much larger mass than what it was. Uh, and three, it had been quite some time since we'd, since we'd done this web, or this week, so, I would imagine, had it not been for a few specific realtor signs that we pulled up, it wouldn't have turned into this acute political uprising, but, um, it is what it is, we take those in stride, and I think going through the process of, of making it more consistent on a Monday or Tuesday, uh, once a week or every other week, then we kind of get people into that routine, but we don't tie our hands by saying that that's, you know, that's the only days we'll do it. We could probably put some sort of statement on social media that talks about snipe signs, real estate signs, and of course, if we're talking about a realtor sign that's in somebody's front yard, we're not going to, if it's encroaching on the curb.
These are all off-site ones.
Yeah, we're never going to pull somebody's real, actual realtor sign.
There's one that got pulled, there's one that got pulled were off-site signs.
Yeah, none of those were actual, like.
Because they were off-site. Okay, okay.
And these are all actually away from the actual resident, they were right away.
Uh, that's all I have. Uh, I know Alderman Coleman has mentioned something about maybe that's a session for legal, is that something you want to see me?
Um, I think probably, yeah.
Do we have any other, any executive session others legal?
I would entertain a motion from Alderman Coleman then, to turn any executive session items under legal.
Drive a second.
Second.
Second, Alvin Baman. Any discussion? Seeing none, non-fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Alvin Stratton?
Yes.
Alvin Cotton?
Yes.
Alvin Coleman?
Yes.
Alvin Hedley?
Yes.
Alvin West?
Alvin Baman?
All right, we're during the executive session.